Good morning and welcome to City Hall. We're going to get started with the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance. Pastor David Dean is from Prevailing Church Ministry. He'll lead us in the invocation. He told me this morning, he's a graduate of Millwood High School, so we'll stick with that theme and have John lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance after the invocation. Would everyone please stand?
Let us pray. Father God, we thank you, Lord, for this another day, God. We just thank you for your many blessings and, God, we thank you for allowing us to gather together today, Father God, to begin to plan for this city, God. But first of all, God, we pray bless us upon this nation, Father God, our government, God. God, we pray bless us upon our state government as well as our city government, God. We just pray bless us upon these leaders of the city, God, and we pray that you would give them the wisdom that they need, God, to guide this city, God. We just pray that you will block any opposition that comes against our city, God, and we just pray for our economy, God, and we pray for the people of our city, God, and we just pray that, Lord, that you would intercede on our behalf, God, and protect us from all those things that are trying to hurt and detriment our city, God. We just thank you, God, and we just bless the mayor, God, and all these council leaders right now, God. In Jesus' name we do pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're on item three of the council agenda, and that's time for Roy Williams, who's the president and CEO of the Oklahoma City Chamber of Commerce, to give us his quarterly update. Roy, welcome back.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Mr. City Manager. Thank you once again for the opportunity to come here and share just a little bit of information about sort of what's going on as it relates to economic development in the community. I would start by saying there's really a lot to celebrate about right now. First, our unemployment has remained extremely low. We're still in the threes, and we're among the 10 lowest unemployment rates for large metros for 63 out of the last 64 months. So, a lot of metros are quite envious of what's going on in our metropolitan area. As well, this summer, we're set to open both the General Electric and the Boeing Research Centers. They're both about to complete construction, and they're moving into those facilities. And I know that y'all will be a part of those as well. I'll also mention that Tinker will break ground next month on the new KC-46 project, which y'all were certainly a huge part of making happen in the acquisition of the former BNSF rail site. So, thanks to you, that half-billion-dollar project will now start and be underway, and it will create over 1,350 jobs. Most of you have been a part of it, but we also opened the River Sports Rapids just recently, with a pun intended. It's a raging success. And also in May, we celebrated Progressions, a new company that opened here in the former Lucent Building, which has been vacant for some time, and they're in the process of ramping up to 500 new jobs. They do credit repair work. And in case you were tuned into TV last night, too, you also saw the premiere of the Oklahoma City's American Ninja Warrior Show. And I understand great audience watching that. So, some great public relations for Oklahoma City, all in a very good context. But celebrating success is one thing, planting seeds is another, and we're also involved in doing that. I would share with you, too, and I know Kirk Foreman on our staff comes here every once in a while as well, but we have the strongest pipeline of new projects than we've had than what we've had in the last four years. And people would ask, wonder why, and we believe it's pretty much driven because of the strength that's beginning to emerge in the national economy, because these are all national projects. They're not Oklahoma City projects. So, we're excited about the opportunity that we have and the fact that we have been put into the site selection process of these 40 projects. Some other seeds we're planting is, we recently led delegations to two very significant international meetings. First, in May, we attended the International Council of Shopping Centers recon conference in Las Vegas. Mayor Cornet was there, Councilman Pettis was there, as well as members of the city and the Alliance staff. We had some very enthusiastic meetings with retailers and developers who are interested in our market. In fact, I would say we had more walk-in traffic than we have ever had, and we've been participating in that conference in over a decade. We coordinated more than 20 specific developer and retail meetings that are focused on Oklahoma City projects. So, we're seeing really more interest than we've ever seen. Also, earlier this month, we led the Oklahoma delegation at the International Bioscience Conference in San Francisco. We had a 1,600-square-foot pavilion, and we hosted more than 150 meetings where Oklahoma bioscience companies and organizations met with potential funders and with partners. As you know, too, we're also tackling a couple of tough problems in our community. Our criminal justice task force continues to be extremely active. Vera, our consultant out of New York, the Vera Institute for Justice, will be in town next week. We will have a task force meeting of that, and we certainly appreciate the involvement and direct participation of city leadership in that task force. It's a very critical effort. And in the event you're not aware of it, we're also seeing movement at the state level in criminal justice. Not only was legislation passed this session, but there's also some, there's initiatives that we will be voting on in November, and also the governor's office is beginning to work with Pew on putting together something similar for the state that we're doing for Oklahoma County. So, we're going to be involved in that process as well, and I'm sure y'all will be asked to do that as well. I would also be remiss if I didn't say that the legislative session this last year was a little challenging in a lot of different ways. We were able to protect what we thought was very critical economic development incentives. There were five key ones we focused on. We kept all five of those intact. We also played a role in preventing what we thought was some very harmful gun legislation, and we actually were a part of passing a bill that clarified some important issues about guns at sporting events and at other events that we feel would have had a negative impact on us. And finally, I would say, we truly appreciate our partnership with the city. In May, we were able to honor all of the MAPS volunteers, all of the task forces in partnership with the city, and thank all of them for what they have been doing to make MAPS not only transparent but extremely successful. So, thank you for letting us be a part of that, and thank you for continuing to be a great partner in all of these other initiatives. So, with that, I'll conclude, Mayor, and be happy to...
A lot of good information and good news. Thanks, Roy. Questions? Yeah, Ed?
I just wanted to ask you about a couple of topics, maybe starting off with the legislature and the challenging environment. I know that probably soon, we're going to be discussing possible Convention Center Hotel. We're making probably an overall half-billion-dollar investment in the convention business, and I'm glad to hear about the national successes, because I know that you have an advertising campaign that's been successful. But we also have this avalanche of national media and tremendous headwinds that you must be facing about the Oklahoma Legislature. And base, the New York Times editorial board, for example, singling out the Oklahoma Legislature of all the states as being detrimental to the poor and some of their regressive policies. Reuters talking about how education has been decimated, and you've talked many, many times about the importance of education to economic development. But Reuters telling the nation and the world about how Oklahoma is getting draconian cuts to education, outpacing the rest of the country. The Guardian talking about to the nation and the world about how Oklahoma is trying to become the most regressive state in America with leading the country for the third year in a row with a number of anti-LGBT legislative bills, 27 this year, almost an obsession, not just with utilization of bathrooms by transgenders, which caused boycotts of North Carolina, but conversion therapy, which has been condemned by the medical community, and on and on. So, it seems to me that the threat to the convention business, the threat to economic development, is starting to crystallize. I mean, Bill de Blasio, when they had the abortion bill that passed both houses with veto-proof majorities, they basically said, if Fallon signs that, all nonessential travel to Oklahoma will be cut off. To me, it seems like we're playing with fire. We're very, very close to getting these kind of national boycotts if they just move a little bit farther. So, as we decide whether to make these investments in a Convention Center Hotel, as you're trying to attract national businesses, how do you get past these headwinds? How do you, I mean, I can't imagine how much you would have to spend to overcome that kind of media.
Well, fortunately or unfortunately, as I talk to my peers across the country, this is happening everywhere. Even though we might get headlines, North Carolina got a lot worse headlines than we did. And Mississippi has gotten a lot worse headlines. So, I think people understand that a lot of this is legislative posturing, that it doesn't necessarily represent the cities and the communities and the real people, that it's people making political decisions as opposed to this being reflective, really, of the citizens of that state or that city. So, it's a challenge. There's obviously no doubt about it, but we can't throw up our hands and say, well, you know, we have no chance to do anything. We've got to continue to work even harder and try even harder, because there's still opportunity out there. I mean, as I just mentioned, Boeing thinks this is a great place to do business. GE thinks this is a great place to do business. Progression thinks it's a great place to do business. So, despite those headwinds, I think we still have tremendous opportunity, and we'll continue taking advantage of everything that we can and also trying to prevent us being on the headlines for the wrong reasons.
Right. Pete?
From your report, it appears that you've continued to do a really good job, and I appreciate the job that you've done with regard to job recruitment and those kind of I watch a TV program sometimes in the mornings, and it has, at the end of it, they also get together and they say, what have you learned? What did I learn today? Well, I'll tell you what I learned today. I need to talk to you before I make comments about the legislature, because to consider the legislature this year challenging is the most, it's the lightest touch I imagine that you could put on it. So, I need to listen to you. My rhetoric with regard to legislature is much more volatile than that usually, and I needed that. I'm going to think about that the next time I talk about it. But we did have a conversation a couple, three weeks ago that the mayor led here on the horseshoe about while we are recruiting jobs in large numbers, the disparity, the income disparity, our average income is dropping. At the same time, we're increasing jobs, our income...
It's flat.
Yeah, it's flat, at least, flat. And it's, I just wonder how long we believe that is sustainable. Do we, is there any kind of a program that would try to raise the average income? It's always been my concern, you've heard, we've talked about it, is the kind of jobs that are created by a number of the projects that we do are not the kind of jobs we want in terms of average income. They tend to be much lower than the average. And as I see that flat thing, and it troubles me over time, because I wonder how long that's sustainable. It's almost like we're creating an underclass of people that find it hard to get out, and the more and more people that fall into that class, the more and more difficult it is for them to get out of that situation. Because for most people, you only have to be slightly under that average wage, and you're not at a living wage. You can't support a family. You can't buy a house. You can't do all the things that people want to do to progress and to get their share of the American dream, really.
Well, actually, for the last decade, we've been on an upward trajectory. Average incomes were rising. It wasn't really until the energy bust that it leveled off.
No, 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 Roy, it's earlier than that. It's the leveling off was...
We've been leading the state in higher...
In average income?
Yes.
Well, that in the statistics we looked at a week ago.
Larry?
Representing the Economic Development Trust, see if my information is correct, Roy. Three of the companies that you mentioned, Boeing, GE, and how do you pronounce it?
Progression.
Progression. Boeing, the average salary of the jobs created there is how much?
About $100,000 to $125,000.
And GE?
Same thing.
And the lowest one is Progression, and Progression was?
Well, those are incentivized jobs, and what they told us is they have a lot of people who make over $100,000.
So, the job...
But it is incentivized, so that doesn't mean everybody does, but the high performers do. They're probably 50, $40,000 to $50,000 jobs on average, but there's high performers and there's low performers.
Which is one of the criteria that's used to determine incentivizing the companies that we're trying to attract in, is that they do pay a very attractive wage, their people, of course, offering benefits.
Right. Almost all incentives are based on jobs that are above averages.
Thank you, sir.
My point is not that people at Boeing don't make a lot of money. They obviously make a lot of money. Not that the people assigned to GE don't make a lot of money. They do. My point is not that we don't want those people here. We do want them here. What I'm concerned about is we've got to find a way to attract, to recreate a middle class, and we're not doing that. And I just, I would like to see some strategy or some conversation that indicates at least a sensitivity to that thing. It's not a, I'm not criticizing the job that you guys have done on the high-end jobs. It's been beyond anything I might have imagined a few years ago. It's wonderful. But I'm concerned that we don't create this, we don't try to maintain this gulf between the $150,000 jobs and the $25,000 to $40,000 jobs, because it's a gulf that will be over the long run not sustainable. But something will happen because of it. It's my fear.
Yeah, I'll be happy to share with you, too, in a different environment, some of the initiatives we're doing in the workforce area with our educational institutions and our existing companies on those jobs that are having a hard time filling, which tend to be the $25,000 to $45,000 jobs. Because there's a lot of them out there, they're having difficulty finding people who can take those jobs.
Right. Well, you see, everywhere you go, you see signs for...
Right.
Nine-dollar-an-hour jobs. I mean, they're everywhere. But the problem is, if you take a nine-dollar-an-hour job, you need to support a family. You can't do it. You can't support yourself. So, that's why I think there's this giant group of people that don't take those jobs, because they're, there's no, they're a dead end for them.
I think if you want to study the income inequality, you might look at median income as opposed to average income, because the high-paying jobs raise artificially. But I just want to ask you about another topic, and that's, we've talked about in the future, running a MAPS for or some other campaign. The public schools are talking about a bond. We'll have a GEO bond next year, potentially. There's stuff with the jail. So, every local municipality or entity that wants to run a tax initiative for a vote of the people, I understand, my understanding is that legally, structurally, they're prohibited from spending their own funds to run a campaign, which means that everybody turns to the chamber to run their campaign.
Yes.
So, is that, what law is it that outlines that? And is that the way it is in cities across America? Is that the way it is in every city in America, that they all are prohibited from running their, or that each entity relies on the Chamber of Commerce to run those campaigns?
You're asking several questions.
Yep.
I think from a legal standpoint, political entities can't spend money on campaigns. Now, whether or not the chamber does it, in my, talking to my peers across the country, almost none of them do. And usually what happens is a task force gets put together every time there's election, and those are just interested individuals. And so, they get together, they raise money, they try to pass the initiative. When they win or lose, they go home. And the next time they do it, there's no institutional knowledge, no one knows how to run a campaign, and they start over. We're one of the few communities that has expertise and institutional knowledge, and I think that's why we've been successful, is we know how to, how to do it. That doesn't mean we can pass any or everything, but we have a process on how we evaluate all of that and whether or not it's the right thing, whether the voters are ready for these kind of issues. So, it's a, it's a very, it's a very detailed process that we go through. In a lot of communities, it's just, I just hope this works. Let's just put it on the ballot, and let's see what happens. And there's no strategy, there's no transparency of process, because there's no process. It's just put it out there.
So, like, 20-something years ago, when we did the 1/8 cent sales tax for the zoo, was that just a task for, like, a citizen initiative?
I don't know. I wasn't sure. I don't know.
It was not a chamber, it wasn't a chamber-driven.
Okay.
I'm not so sure the first chamber-driven support groups wasn't the '86 election. I would be surprised that prior to 1986, the chamber was involved that way, the way they are now. And it, I, it's kind of good news and bad news, in a sense. I mean, you do it very professionally, you know, and I think without professional expertise, there were some elections that we've had over the last few years that have greatly benefited the city that would not have passed without the expertise and the financial support of the chamber. I think sometimes the bad news is, it becomes the filter through which we have to determine what we're going to go forward with, and sometimes that's difficult, I think, from our, at least it is from my position.
Well, I-89 district wasn't passing bond issues, and still the chamber started helping it.
Yeah, I would, I don't know, I'm not that much of a historian, but the, the first reelection I ever had of it was the '86 six-to-fix thing, and it failed, but we learned a whole lot about how that kind of activity could be helpful. We had projects in it that weren't vetted publicly at all. The Dome Stadium on the fairgrounds was the example that pulled it down, but the chamber was very supportive, and had it not been active, there would, at that point, there was no vehicle for raising the kind of money that it took to pass a citywide issue.
And I would remind you, too, you refer to the chamber. Well, y'all are also part of the chamber. I mean, the mayor's on our board, Jim's on our board, the school superintendent's on our board, the county commissioners are on our board. We're very much a public-private organization, so, I mean, you almost make it sound like there's this filter over here outside of the public sector. Well, the public sector is very involved in this. It's not an isolated organization over here.
It would seem, if everybody's, if we are an outlier and everybody's relying on this public-private entity, it would seem to give that public-private entity kind of a veto power over the initiatives. I mean, you would decide how much...
We base everything on independent polling. I mean, we don't sit there and say, take this off, put that on. We look at what's the voter's appetite for issues, and that's the information we share. And then y'all decide. We can't put anything on a ballot. We have no legal authority. Y'all do that. So do the county, so does the school district. So, we can't put an initiative out there. You have to do that.
What would be your thoughts on, 10 years ago, we did something new. We put about 10% of the GEO bond for economic development, for job incentives that Larry was mentioning. Would you, would you think that we should do that again, based on the experience of the last 10 years? Do you think...
Absolutely. It's one of the few competitive edges we have over other communities in Oklahoma, and it allows us to compete with places like Texas that has public incentives.
But you would, you would poll that and ask the people that they thought...
Yeah, if the voters weren't for it, we would say, don't put it before them.
Okay.
They'll vote it down. Why put something up you know they would not accept?
Okay. Thank you.
Well, I appreciate your work.
My pleasure. Thank you.
All right. We're on to item four of the Journal of Council Proceedings. Four A is to receive the journal for June 14th, and four B is to approve the journal for May 31st and June 7th. Is there a motion? All right, comments or questions on the journal? Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item five is requests for uncontested continuances.
Mayor, a few this morning, starting on page 19, under item 9C1A. Page 19, 9C1A, 1102 North Bradley, we ask that be stricken. We need to re-notify. Moving to page 20, under 9E1B, 10805 North Council, we ask that be stricken. The owner secured. Moving to page 21, item K, 1610 Northwest 45th Street, we ask that that be stricken. We need to re-notify. And then under item 9F1, 10805 North Council Road, we ask that be stricken. The owner secured. And item P, 1610 Northwest 45th, we ask that that be stricken. We need to re-notify.
Are there any other requests for uncontested continuances? All right, we'll move on to revocable permits. This is item six on your agenda. We have three this morning. The first is from Prodigal to hold the Bricktown Fourth of July fireworks. Anyone here from Prodigal this morning? Hey, come on up. We'll need your name and address for the record, please.
Darren Ransley, 11124 Kingswick Drive, Oklahoma City.
Tell us about the July 4th event.
This will be the third year that Prodigal are involved in the Bricktown Fourth Fest. This year is going to be slightly different. We're going to partner with the Oklahoma City Dodgers. At the end of the Oklahoma City Dodgers game on Monday, July 4th, they will be deploying low-altitude fireworks, whilst at exactly the same time, we will be deploying high-level altitude fireworks, if you will. So, the fireworks will be in two geographic locations, one at the ballpark, and then our location, which will be the Bricktown Riverwalk Park. We've closed down a secure area. We have security 15 officers, and the fireworks will be deployed at exactly the same time. Our fireworks, which will be 15 minutes long, will go five minutes longer than the Bricktown ballpark, which will be 10 minutes, allowing us to have a finale, which will be slightly away from the normal geographic location.
All right. How many years have you been doing this?
This will be year number three for us, and it's had a different feel each year. We've had everything from live music downtown through to, this year, DJs, through to being involved in the fireworks and our local community, obviously.
All right. Well, that is in Ward 7. John, you want to make the motion? All right. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Thank you very much. Good luck.
One...
All right, item 6B is a request from OKC Pride to hold the OKC Pride Weekend. Is anyone here representing OKC Pride? Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Michael Clark. I'm the president of OKC Pride. Address is 6,001 North Brookline Avenue. And this is our 29th year to hold OKC Pride, our parade and festival here in Oklahoma City. We expect it to be our largest ever. You know, in the wake of the tragedy in Orlando, we have a special motivation to pull together as an LGBTQ community and really be there for one another. It's been a tragedy that's deeply affected a lot of people in our community, and so we have taken extra measures this year to ensure the safety and security of our guests. The Oklahoma City Police Department has been very generous and reached out to us to be highly involved in all aspects of our three-day festival and parade. Friday night, we have our equality concert, where we have a great show that's free to the public on 39th Street. We have an arts festival that's Saturday and Sunday with live entertainment all day long both days. And then our finale is the parade, the OKC Pride Parade on Sunday at 6:00 PM.
Michael, I had on my calendar that there was an event last night at the Skirven, at the Red Piano Bar.
Yes, we had our opening, our official opening to Pride Week, and we had 20 or 30 attendees and horseshoes, and it was just kind of a casual get-together and ribbon-cutting to kind of kick off Pride Week. There are events all over town throughout the week at supporting businesses that aren't, they aren't run by OKC Pride, but a number of supporting businesses. In the last few weeks, we've had businesses all over the city reach out to want to be involved in the parade and all the festivities, and we really appreciate that community involved here.
We tried to go by, but the piano bar was under construction, so we didn't quite know what was going on, so, sorry about that.
No, we, I appreciate that. Kay Floyd was there and spoke, and we had a nice turnout.
All right, it's in Ward 2. Ed?
Can you talk about the mental health symposium and maybe support groups that would have a presence at the, during the Pride Weekend?
Yes, we did just complete our second annual LGBTQ mental health symposium, which was held on Film Row. We had 175 counselors, psychologists, and health professionals that turned out to learn more about dealing with that community effectively, and it was a really uplifting event. Many of those people will be at our festival Saturday and Sunday with booths reaching out to folks. out to folks. Also, anyone that's having trouble coping is always welcome to contact OKC Pride or Freedom Oklahoma. Both have outreach and support.
Would it be too late if any entity wanted to get a place in the parade? Can you go online and, or is it?
Well, I appreciate that. OKCPride.org is our website. We still are accepting entries in the parade, and if someone would like to participate in the festival, they can register there as well.
Great. So you expect this to be the largest ever?
Yeah, we've already got over a hundred parade entries and about a hundred and twenty festival participants, and they still are coming in every day. Attendance, you know, last year, I think, OKCPD estimated around seventy thousand attendees. I would not be surprised to see ten or twenty thousand more than that this year, partially based on reaction to the tragedy, but also the unfortunate thing is that it takes a tragedy like this to really make people open their eyes and see what a vibrant community this is and how involved it is in the greater Oklahoma City community that are the, the coverage and exposure and media that have gone, you know, been subsequent, have really boosted things up, and we expect a very large event this year.
Let's do it then. Let's make it the biggest ever. I would encourage everybody watching to come. You should experience it at least once. This is a great family event, lots of kids, lots of institutions throughout the city, and I hope everybody comes and experiences it.
And we do have an expanded family area for Saturday from ten to six with inflatables, free snow cones, popcorn, cotton candy, all that sort of thing. We've got live entertainment on the stage all day Saturday that is family-friendly and fun, and we just hope everyone comes out to really celebrate our community and come together.
Fantastic. Move for approval. All right, we have a motion and a second. Cast your votes on six B. Passed unanimously. Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Item six C is a request with TriOKC to hold the Lake Stanley Draper Duathlon. Anyone here representing this event? All right, well, it's in Ward four. Pete? All right, we have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. It passes unanimously, and that event will be July tenth at West Stanley Draper Drive between southeast one hundred and fourth street and southeast one hundred and nineteenth street. At this time, I'd like to move up item nine I. Dr. Goodlow has driven down from Tulsa to present his budget. Dr. Goodlow, would you come forward? Thank you for making the trip down today and presenting the budget needs.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate everyone's time. I very respectfully submit our budget for medical oversight for our EMS system. We have worked extremely hard this year to actually reduce the operational cost for the coming year and maintain our continuous oversight services. The budget is pretty self-explanatory. I'm happy to answer any questions that any of you might have, and with your permission, I would like to give you a very brief update on some key events that have happened recently and that are happening in our EMS system. As the council's acutely aware, as I walked in this morning, I couldn't help but notice the list of priorities for the council right outside the chamber here, and appropriately first and foremost is to create a safe and secure community. Your EMS system is obviously a very vital part of that infrastructure and making that happen. And in any highly-developed, westernized culture city, cardiovascular disease continues to be a major impact on citizens' health. And so we are faced each and every day with significant life-threatening heart attacks, other cardiac issues, and the worst of all, sudden cardiac arrest. We have undertaken a very aggressive, evidence-based approach to our defibrillation strategies, and just within this month, we have changed those strategies to increase the energy levels that paramedics are defibrillating hearts, and in a novel but still research-supported maneuver, we are now using two defibrillators near simultaneously on patients. And this speaks to the inherent value of having paramedics not just based at IMSA, but also based in your Oklahoma City Fire Department as well. We would not be able to do this without having dual-agency paramedics. And so I can tell you firsthand, just within the last three weeks, both in Oklahoma City and Tulsa, collectively, we have been able to restore circulation to three individuals just within the last three weeks that I do not think we would have been able to achieve without making this change. The paramedics are extremely excited about this, they have trained very diligently in this, and we are already seeing positive results of that. Now, that being said, we certainly continue to live in interesting times, and very sad to say, you need to go no more than just a few blocks from this council chamber to know that we very much know the impact of terrorism in this community. Orlando was a horrible tragedy. It was unfortunately just the latest in a mass-scale attack on perfectly innocent citizens. And this is an EMS system that has taken great pride in preparing for such chaos and misfortune. We hope that that training obviously never has to get used, but we are very realistic. Certainly on any given day, there are shootings and stabbings and serious motor vehicle collisions that occur here in the community, but large-scale events, we continue to train and prepare for. Just on Friday, the National Academies of Sciences, Engineering, and Medicine, based in Washington, D.C., issued a landmark report over five hundred pages in length on the importance of a national trauma care system and translating the advances in trauma care that have been realized in military conflict arenas back to the civilian world. I'm very pleased to not just share with you, but to reassure you that we are years ahead of many other large urban civilian EMS systems in that for years now. We have supplied all first responding and ambulance apparatus with multiple tourniquets to help severe hemorrhage. We have specialty bandages and gauzes that specifically works to accelerate blood clotting, and we also were the first large urban EMS system in the entirety of the United States to make as part of our standards of care a medication called tranexamic acid that also helps to stabilize blood clotting in victims that might otherwise bleed out. And we have an extremely good, close-working relationship with our Level One Trauma Center here in Oklahoma, the OU Medical Center right here in Oklahoma City, and our Level Two Trauma Centers, St. John Medical Center and St. Francis Hospital, both in Tulsa. These institutions have been very supportive of the trauma advances that we are making in the pre-hospital care arena. I assure you that we are up to date with even these most recent recommendations. You have an Oklahoma College of Emergency Physicians that I have been privileged to now lead as president, starting this month for the next couple of years, and I can assure you that we are heavily invested in advocacy and in action to make sure that our emergency departments, as well as our pre-hospital care, is everything that it can be and should be to take care of folks, be it a more traditional cardiovascular or respiratory-type illness or part of the present age that we live in. And just in closing, I just want to reassure you, and as importantly, most importantly, I want to reassure every single citizen and visitor to this fine city, that this is an EMS system that is committed to giving you the absolute best, and we take care of everybody. It is a source of pride that we take care of everybody. We will take care of you regardless of your age, regardless of your race, regardless of your gender, regardless of your religious beliefs, regardless of orientation, regardless of anything. We will take care of you. All it takes is three digits, nine one one, that you dial or someone dials on your behalf, and I can promise you that you will get a committed EMT and paramedic at your side in a timely manner to deliver the care that will make a difference for you.
Questions for Dr. Goodlow? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it very much. We can go ahead and vote on nine I at this time. Anybody like to make a motion?
I'm moved.
All right. This is under items that are voted on separately. Cast your votes, and it passes unanimously. All right, we'll reassess the council meeting, convene as the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority, and Christian York's going to have a presentation.
We drafted our budget last week, but this week we're presenting both the budget for the MFA and the PPA. Christian's going to do both of those this morning.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. I'll just walk you through the highlights of the FY seventeen OC MFA budget. If we look at the trust as a whole, it grows to just shy of a hundred and two million, which is about a nine percent increase over FY sixteen. If we look at that by function, we can see that health insurance comprises the lion's share at about sixty-four percent, or approximately sixty-five million dollars, followed by a few sub-functions that we like to categorize under our risk function, which would be our workers' compensation at twelve point two million, property and liability insurance at two point six million, and unemployment at two hundred and twenty-five thousand. The next largest piece would be our general purpose and other. That houses a variety of sub-functions to include our drainage capital, which is where we collect impact fees from our developers to be used to address flooding issues, myriad gardens, capital improvements, and police special investigation funds. The next largest piece there is the information technology function at seven point six million, and that provides funding for a variety of issues to include software licensure renewals, improvements to servers and maintenance, and then providing phone service for the city and other issues. Followed by the advanced capital funding. This is a revolving fund that we do prep work for geo-bond-funded projects such as land acquisition, architectural and engineering services and so forth, that in essence allows us to get out geo-bond projects a little bit faster than if we waited for the funding from the geo-bond project. Once we receive the money from the bond sale, we reimburse the fund, and then we continue the cycle. And that gets us to our-
If we just stop just for a minute and talk about why is there an MFA? And the MFA is primarily for benefits. Now, we'll be expanded into a few other areas, but primarily for workers' comp and insurance because we can't do multi-year contracts with the city. And so we transfer money from the general fund to the MFA. It has no independent sources of funding that come into it, and we do mostly, as the pie chart shows, health insurance, workers' comp, other types of insurance, and we've expanded that over the years and also into IT because we have multi-year maintenance agreements on computer issues. So there's a few other things in there, but that's, it's really pretty simple what the MFA is, and it's mainly for multi-year contracts.
So Jim, in health insurance, we're self-insured with that backup for catastrophic events, but for property liability insurance, are we self-insured also to a certain level? And then do we have policies?
So on our property and liability, we purchase insurance with property especially in the last few years because of what we've had really several years back now, but we had multiple years where we had tornadoes, hail damage, severe damage that we had to have claims on our insurance, and the claims that we, or the claims that we received back from the insurance companies far exceeded what we had paid in over several years with our insurance program. So our deductibles are very high on our property insurance, particularly with, on flooding, it's like around five hundred thousand, I think, on flooding in most events. On events like wind and hail, it's closer to two million dollars. And so in a way, that's self-insured, and we build up a reserve in that fund to help us cover those, but it's still purchased insurance, so we have coverage on those other events.
On health insurance, we, most, the indemnity plan, we're self-insured with backup insurance on it, but on the PP-
On the HMO.
On the HMOs, we, that's, those are all contracted.
Thank you.
The restriction on multi-year contracts is by, because of charter or state law?
State law.
As we drill in and look at the revenues by source, once again, insurance contributions make up the largest piece there at about sixty-four percent, or sixty-five million dollars. This includes both the city's contribution and the employees' contribution. Transfers in, as we discussed a little bit, for funding sources, accounts for about twenty-two million. These are coming from a few different places, mostly general fund, as well as our internal service funds for risk and IT to fund those types of functions. Fund balance accounts for about nine point three million, and then other various funding sources account for about five hundred thousand, or two point three percent of the total.
So Christian, when I was reading this, the fund balance is carried over dollars from previous years?
Correct, yes, ma'am.
Okay, it was a little hard to tell on the-
Yes, ma'am. If we look at the types of expenditures we have in the trust, as we might expect due to the types of functions we house there, ninety-three percent of that, or about ninety-four million dollars, is in other services and charges. This is going to include workers' compensation claim services, IT services, health insurance services, and so forth. Transfers out account for about six million dollars. This is going to be moving funds out of the trust to where they will ultimately be spent, such as the impact fees we talked about with drainage capital moving over to our CIP fund. Materials and supplies are a relatively small percent, about point seven four, and accounts for about seven hundred and fifty-four thousand in the fund. That could be anything from postage to paper. Reserves are about three hundred and five thousand, or point three percent, and finally, capital outlay is right at a hundred and three thousand, or point one percent. And that gets us to our a hundred and two million dollar total. Just to head off, any questions? The vast majority of the increase between last year and this year of that nine percent can be accounted for in our health insurance cost increases, and almost all of that is attributable to our HMO contract pricing, based on the new rate that we've received plus our forecasted medical inflation rate for next year. And with that, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
All right, questions for Christian on the MFA? All right, how about a motion then to approve the MFA?
Second.
Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. We will adjourn the OC MFA and convene as the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority, and Christian will return for another presentation.
All right, once again, OC PPA, similar to the OC MFA, allows us the benefit of doing those multi-year contracts. We house a variety of functions over there. It's a little bit more complicated than the OC MFA, just because we have a more diverse group of functions over there. But as we can see, as we drill in there, that fairgrounds accounts for the largest piece of that at about forty-one point five percent, or twenty-four million. Now, I have to say that we're a little bit skewed for this year. The thing I should point out to you is that fairgrounds had a bond sale in twenty fifteen, and it was for approximately twenty million dollars in improvements and renovations at the fairgrounds. Well, ten million of that is being budgeted for this next fiscal year, just based on projects they want to get out next year. So that's going to bump that number significantly from what it would normally be from prior years. Golf courses account for about seventeen point nine percent, or ten million dollars of the fund. MAPS contracts and capital maintenance, this is going to be things like our SMG contract to manage the Chesapeake Energy Arena, as well as the Cox Convention Center, comes in at about eleven point six million in total. Business improvement districts account for about four point five million of the pie, as were performance, arts, and activities. This is going to be our civic center activities, as well as our Rose State Performing Arts Center activities account for about four million. OC PPA capital reserve at two point seven percent, or one point six million, is used for capital improvements at the Chesapeake Energy Arena. And then we have general purpose and miscellaneous accounting for about two point six percent, or just over a million. And that's going to be for our general purpose, such as auditing the trust, economic development, and other sports facilities improvements. And then finally, we have our natural gas contract, which accounts for about one point four percent, or eight hundred and fifty thousand, and that's where we manage our master contract for our large natural gas purchases from a variety of our departments that have high usage in natural gas facilities. But overall, that gets us to our new total of about fifty-nine million, just shy of sixty million, which represents a thirty-two percent increase over the prior year. Once again, that number's skewed in the current year just because of the bond sale that we're including there. But we also had some increased activity in our bids by adding the Adventure District, which accounted for an additional one point five million. And then our performing arts centers, our activities, also had some movement of about a million dollars, and that's based on a change to the way we handle our box office ticketing system, as well as some additional equipment rental that we're expecting in the next year. If we look at our revenues by source, once again, fund balance is a little bit skewed because it's accounting for approximately ten million dollars in fairgrounds, a bond sale that happened in a prior year, but it ends up being about a quarter of the total fund, or fourteen point five million dollars in revenue in total. The next largest piece is going to be our hotel motel sales tax, which accounts for fourteen million dollars, or about twenty-three point six percent from our dedicated tax on that. The golf course revenue of about ten million dollars represents, ten million dollars represents about seventeen point nine percent. And finally, transfers from the general fund of about eight point two million accounts for about thirteen point eight percent, and that, once again, is our SMG contract and some other smaller transfers. And then things that didn't fit in were us about seven million dollars in other revenue. And then, things that didn't fit in were us about $7 million in other revenue. So, as we look at the types of expenditures we have in the fund, other service and charges, similar to the SMFA, still dominates a large piece of it at 46% or 27 million. But there's quite a few things going on there. That's going to be for our SMG contract, as we mentioned, bid district expenses, fairground projects, and so forth. Transfers out account for about 17.4% or 10.4 million. And these are going to be things like our transfers from the civic center. They transfer back any revenue or profits over their operating costs back to the general fund of about 2.6 million. And then, also, we transfer back any of our hotel motel tax that we send to those PPA, goes towards debt service, and then, any excess on top of that gets sent back to the hotel motel tax in about, the amount of about $6 million. Debt service accounts for 13.4% or about 8 million. 6 million of that approximately is for fairgrounds improvements. 1.4 million is for golf debt that we have. Capital outlay accounts for about 12.3% or 7.3 million, and that's for a variety of functions, but 50% of that are going to be those MAPS-related capital improvement projects, which would be improvements at the ballpark, Chesapeake, Energy Arena, and the Cox Convention Center. And then, finally, we have a small piece for personnel services at 7.7% or 4.6 million, and these are going to be our golf employees. And with that, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to try and answer them.
All right. Questions on the PPA?
I have one. I noticed the fund balance is 25% of the total asset. Is there some reason that fund balance would be that high? Is there some demand that we would anticipate that we'd want to keep a fund balance that large?
Well, the biggest piece of that is going to be that bond sale for the fairgrounds. So, I would imagine they're expecting a large amount of projects in this next fiscal year.
So, carryover, the balance before loss, do you carry over- Is that not fund balance in the same sense that we talk about fund balance in our budget?
It's not unobligated by fund balance.
Okay.
All right. Christian, thank you. Is there a motion to prove that, well, hold on just a second, because we have this amended item to the PPA agenda that's going to be put into executive session. So, why don't we have a motion to put the amended item into executive session first? All right. Cast your votes to move that one to executive session. It passed unanimously. And then, a motion to put items A through E on the PPA and approve them. Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Now, we'll recess the PPA and move on to the Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust, where there are two items. All right. We'll have a motion in a second on the EAT. Any comments or questions on this item? All right. Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. We'll adjourn the OCEAT and reconvene the council meeting with the consent docket. All right. Are there any individual considerations? Larry?
W. A.T.
A.T.? All right. Larry, you want to get us started with item W?
Yeah, real quickly, I've asked Eric to come forward, if he would, and give our viewers an update on the schedule for this project. This is the Hilldale neighborhood in northwest Oklahoma City to resurface the streets and to put in some sidewalks. So, if you'd just give our viewers a brief timeline, I'd appreciate it. Eric?
Thank you, Mr. Councilman. This is one of our 2007 bond-issue projects. It's for residential resurfacing. The timeline is that work will begin a little bit later this summer, so the contractor's expecting to begin work in September. There is a slight delay in the start, but it is a part of the contract that they'll begin work here pretty quickly, and it's expected to go through next summer 2017. So, the work not only includes the resurfacing of the streets, but it also includes a sidewalk on one side of most of the streets in the area as well. So, with that, the initial updates, I'd be happy to provide those.
All right. Ed, item A.T.
So, okay, so, this is paying OG&E 29 million for the substation. My, my question is on the, the land that we're giving OG&E, which is referred to as the River Yard. What, that, is that, that's about 17 acres?
I don't recall what acres is for the, the land that they're getting.
The amount of land that's included in the agreement is about 17.4 acres.
And that, okay, so, that's, what would you estimate the worth of that 17.4 acres to be?
We did not do an appraisal of that property or of the value of the land where the current substation is. I may need some help from the municipal council on this, but the, the theory of this project or this agreement is that it's under the substitute facility doctrine, so we are building them a substitute, we are funding the construction of a substitute facility for the existing facility that they have at Fourth and Robinson.
So, the 30 million or 29 million plus doesn't really include the land. It's 29 million plus we're exchanging land, so we're giving them that 17.4 acres, whatever that-
We are giving them that 17.4 acres.
So, that's on top of the 20, in addition to the-
No, it's included in the 29.2 million.
Okay.
We get the land, they give us their old land. The construction of the facility includes the land. It's a substitute facility.
Okay. But to get the deal done, you have to give them 29 million, and you have to give them 17 acres?
Yes.
And that 17 acres would have some value, presumably?
It does, yes.
But we don't, we don't have a sense of how much that would be?
I doubt it's worth as much as their land at Fourth and Robinson.
Okay.
Because that land also has a value, and it's some of the most valuable land in downtown Oklahoma City right now.
Right. I guess I just, up until this point, I thought that 30 million included that land. I didn't, didn't realize we were throwing in 17 acres also.
The price would have been higher if we'd had to go buy them a site.
Okay. So, it says the estimate of cost includes a credit for equipment returned to stock. Any chance that the costs go down?
I think, well, the way this is written, it is a maximum price. There are some things that could create situations where we might have to go over that price, including the cost for any screening of the facility, but there are opportunities to save money as well.
Like?
Well, we, we will be, we will be reimbursing OG&E for their actual expenditures, so if their labor costs are less, or the actual cost of the equipment is less, we get, or we get a bigger credit for equipment that they're going to be able to reuse, then it could make the costs go down.
So, who owns the River Yard property now?
The city of Oklahoma City.
Okay. Okay.
But does the contract have any incentives in it for them to hold the price down?
Say that again, I'm sorry.
Does, does the contract of substitute facilities doctrine contract have any, have any clauses in it that would incentivize holding the price down? So, if they held the price down by a million dollars, they'd get some of that million dollars?
No. We would, we would, we would achieve the million-dollar savings.
Why would we think that they're going to hold the price down? Just because they're very good people?
Well, they're, they're very conservative people. I mean, culturally as an organization, they're extremely conservative, and they're very concerned, and they understand our concern, that we not go over the price, you know, the 29.2 million dollars that's in there.
We're going over the price that we really talked about by giving them the land on top of that, because we always talked about 30 million as the cost of moving the facility. So, we already have busted that budget based on the, based on, unless the land is only that we're talking about is worth less than 700,000 dollars.
It very well could be.
Yeah. So, I'm, what I'm asking for is, are there incentives inside the contract to incentivize them to build their new facility for less than 29,292,27, or 722? Because other than that, I think that there's very little reason to think that they would do that.
Well, other than that we will be paying for actual claims that they submit to us and for their actual expenditures, I think that's their incentive to save money. I don't think they want to submit to us claims that are in error.
It's a not-to-exceed number, and we think that there's, that they're very conservative in what they've got in there. They weren't taking any risks as they were-
No, they, they are not taking any risks. It's too important of a facility.
Well, I'm sure, you know, they're negotiating contracts. They think they can build it for that.
So, it's possible it will come in for 29, but we think there's an opportunity for us to be below that.
I also think there's some confusion about this land swap again, because we're not just, I mean, we are getting land in exchange for land.
Yes, we are.
And then, we're building a facility. It's not a net extra 17 and 1/2 acres. We get the property that their facility is on in exchange for the other land. So, if those were of equal value or even disparate value, I guess, the cost is to move the facility.
Yes.
And we're assigning equivalent values to the property.
My point is that we've always talked about that being a $30 million cost. That money, when we decided to move the facility to another location, that didn't mean 30 million was the number that we held back. If this comes inside the 30 million, I'm going to be happy, but if it doesn't, and I don't see any incentive for OG&E to bring it in under that, if it comes in over that, I think we have an obligation to the public to say, well, we are over, we missed it. We didn't, we didn't get it built for what we thought we were going to get it built for.
We have an agreement with them for 29.2 million, so-
We developed this whole system to make sure the public doesn't really realize how much things cost by using the judgment rolls and putting it on, and we do that over and over and over. We're doing it on the water deal. And I, I, I'm not opposed to it, but what I am opposed to is not acknowledging that instead of the water deal, it cost an X, it cost X plus the money that we put on the average tax. It seems to me we have an obligation to say that, if that's the way it is. And what I'm worried about is this is another one of those things where money's going to fall through the crack, and it's not going to be paid for by MAPS, it's going to be paid for by an increase in average taxes, and that's my point.
No, there's no, there's no potential for that. Yeah, there's no potential for that. It's not a judgment.
I'm confused on how 29.2 million is not under 30 million. That's, that's what I'm confused about. Why are we thinking that 29.2 higher than 30?
It is, but we don't know the cost, we don't know the value of the land we're throwing in on top of that.
But we're getting the land.
But we also don't, we also don't know the value of the land we're getting.
We're just swapping the land. We know the value of the land right next door to it.
Well, we have a general idea, I guess. I'm not saying we don't. We didn't have it appraised.
And we didn't have the 17.4 acres appraised?
No, we didn't.
We've got other sales in the area that are, I mean, it may increase in value in the years to come.
As will their property.
Yeah. But let me, let me just ask you. It says that if they spend materials to enhance the substation beyond the functionality of the current substation, we're, we're not to pay for those materials.
That's correct.
We're not paying for betterments.
So, how, how is that monitored, or how is that?
We're going to be monitoring the, you know, if they want to put in an extra transformer or some extra capacity that they don't have today, we're going to, we're going to, we're going to monitor that, know what it is, and we're going to, we're going to say that, that isn't falling under the reimbursement portion.
So, it would be the exact same capacity, any capacity above that would be on them?
That's correct.
That's correct. Every invoice will be reviewed by the program management staff of MAPS. We'll get detailed invoices with both materials and labor, and we'll be able to ascertain if it's over and above the capacity of the current substation.
All right. Kathy, thank you. All right. Mark, you wanted to talk about, is it S1 and X2?
X1 and X2.
X1 and X2.
Just briefly, Your Honor, there was a contract awarded to TJ Campbell Construction Company. It's for a detention pond at North Pennsylvania and 122nd. This is to alleviate downstream flooding at one of the busiest areas of Oklahoma City, and so, I'm encouraged and happy to report to Ward 8 that we will have a detention pond. Last year, when we had the heavy rains, there were some effects from flooding due to the heavy rains, and so, that's a new awarded contract. And then, as to X2, there is a contract awarded at 164th North Portland Avenue to May Avenue. That's a $2 million project where we're widening 164th and resurfacing, and that's another road being widened and, and widened and enhanced in Ward 8. Thank you.
All right. Any other comments or questions about the consent docket? We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Just one item on the concurrence docket today. Is there a motion on item 8? Okay, we have a motion in a second. Anyone here hoping to speak on the concurrence docket today? All right. Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 9 is a list of items that require a separate vote. We'll start with a series of zoning cases. The first is an ABC issue in Ward 6 at 909 Southwest 25th Street. Meg?
Mr. Francis, has anyone signed up? This is an ABC at 909 Southwest 25th, as the mayor said. No protest at the planning commission. I would move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Cast your votes on item 9A1. It passed unanimously. Item 9A2 is a zoning case in Ward 3 at 4420 South Morgan Road. It's currently double-A agricultural, and it would become a new R1 single-family residential district. Larry?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. Has anybody signed up to speak on this? This was unanimously passed by the planning commission to rezone this land from double-A to R1. Is the applicant present? Not seeing them, no. I'll move for approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. We're voting on item 9A2. Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 9A3 is a zoning case in Ward 2 at 5505 North Brookline Avenue. It's currently inside of a simplified plan unit development and a series of other zoning cases, and it would be going into a new spud if approved. Ed?
Did anybody sign up to speak? Okay, I move for approval. Had unanimous planning commission recommendation, no protest.
All right. We have a motion and a second. We're getting ready to vote on item 9A3. Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 9A4 is also in Ward 2. This is at 1632 Northwest 29th Street. It's a R1 single-family district, and it would be into a new spud if approved. Ed?
Same thing. I move for approval. Nobody signed up? Okay, move for approval.
All right. Cast your votes on 9A4. It passed unanimously. Item 9A5 is a zoning case in Ward 7. It's at 5709 East Memorial Road. It's currently in a highway commercial district, and it would be put into a new spud. John?
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Madam Clerk, has anyone signed up to speak? I do see the applicant is present. This is to develop a mixed-use development that contains commercial and industrial uses. It did pass the planning commission. There was no protest. I move for approval.
All right. We have a motion and a second. We're voting on item 9A5. Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 9A6 is a zoning case in Ward 4 at 5904 South Santa Fe Avenue. It's currently R4 general residential, and it would be put into a new spud. Pete?
Is there anyone here to speak on it?
No.
I move approval.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. We're voting on 9A6. It passed unanimously. Item 9A7 is a zoning case in Ward 6 at 1409 Northwest 10th Street. It's currently C4 general commercial and R3 medium density, and it would be put into a new spud. Meg?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I see that Tim Johnson's here. I'm not sure we need to do too much, but this is a really exciting project. This is a property that's owned by the city of Oklahoma City that we acquired some years ago when we widened 10th Street, right on the southern edge of Clasen 10 Pen neighborhood, which is experiencing such an amazing renaissance. City issued an RFP, and we're delighted that we had a proposed development that's mixed use. It includes 10% affordable housing as part of the project, and there were no protests at the planning commission, and I see no one here. I don't think, I better check. Has anybody signed up? No, no protest here, so I would move approval of the project.
All right, we're voting on item 9A7. Cast your votes. All right, we're voting on item 9A7. Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 9A8 is back in Ward 2 at 436 Northwest 27th Street. It's a R2 medium-low-density residential and historic landmark overlay district, and would be put into a new spud. Ed?
Did anybody sign up to speak? No protest. Unanimous approval at the planning commission. I move for approval.
All right, we're voting on 9A8. It passes unanimously. Item 9B represents some items that have come to us from the traffic commission. The first is in Ward 6. It has to do with some one-hour metered parking spaces. Meg, you okay with item 9B?
Mayor, yes, I think this was an opportunity to correct the fact that we removed a commercial loaning zone from the 100 Park Avenue building during Project 180, and we put back meters instead of commercial zone, and so we're trying to fix that, so I'd move approval.
All right, cast your votes on 9B1. It passes unanimously. Item 9B2 is also in Ward 6, and this has to do with parking spaces for the physically disabled on the west side of South Hudson Avenue.
Right, and the next couple of these relate to parking for the MAPS 3 downtown park. And so the first one is physically disabled spaces on the west side of Hudson. Move approval.
All right, cast your votes on 9B2. It passes unanimously. And you want to go ahead and make the motion on 9B3 as well?
Yes, this is the inset angle parking that creates something like 100 spaces along the side of the park. Move approval.
Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 9C is a public hearing regarding dilapidated structures. Is there anyone here hoping to speak under any item listed under 9C?
May I ask Charles a question? Charles, the Penn Grand apartment complex that's listed here so many times. We've got...
On Penn?
Yes, on Penn, South Penn, roughly 37th and South Penn. Is this every unit? I went and looked at it yesterday, and it was just, it was hard to tell if it was the entire complex or if it was individual units.
No, it's individual units in the end inside.
Okay. It does look terrible. So hopefully we'll get some activity. Thank you.
All right, we're voting on item 9C. These are the dilapidated structures listed. It passes unanimously. Item 9D is a public hearing regarding dilapidated structures in a historic preservation landmark district. Just have one item on the list today. It's in Ward 6. Is anyone here hoping to speak on this item? All right, Meg, you want to make a motion?
Well, I do have another question. The notes say that the owner has a buyer for this property, and they intend to rehab it. It was very hard for me to say. I'm glad to see the pictures, because I couldn't see the structure behind the house. And the house obviously needs work, but if there is a proposed owner, and if we knew what the closing date was, I really would like to wait to see that this actually sells.
Even if that happens, we'd still work with the new owner. I mean, if that happens, we're more than happy to work with the new owner and him come, you know, to us with a proposal to rehab it. We'd be more than happy to listen to him.
I mean, do you have an idea of what the proposed closing date was?
We do not.
Could we check that? I mean, I don't want it to be outside of 30 days and have the structure demolished before there's a buyer.
Yeah, they haven't contacted us on that at all, but we'll try.
Well, could I defer this for two weeks and ask you to go ahead and reach out and see if we can figure out when the closing date is so that we could try to work with it? If they are intending to rehab it, it is, in my opinion, a contributing structure, and I'd prefer to see it rehabbed and torn down.
Yeah, we don't know who the new owner would be, so I mean, we haven't been contacted by them.
Well, if you don't object, my preference would be to defer this for two weeks so that we can investigate that. July 5th, so we'd make that motion.
All right, we're voting on a two-week deferral for item 9D. Cast your votes on the deferral. That item is deferred. Item 9E is a public hearing regarding unsecured structures. Is there anyone here hoping to speak under any item listed under 9E? All right, how about a motion? All right, cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 9F is a public hearing regarding abandoned buildings. Is there anyone here hoping to speak under any of these items? All right, cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 9G is our second public annual hearing to discuss expenses on the fire sales tax. Is anyone here hoping to speak on this item today? All right, how about a motion then to move it forward? Is there a second? Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 9H is a companion item. This has to do with the police sales tax, and this is a public hearing. Is there anyone here hoping to speak on this item today? All right, how about a motion then to move it forward? All right, cast your votes. 9H passes unanimously. Item 9I was moved up and approved earlier. Item 9J is our -- would be an extension of our ASME contract until we can get an agreement? All right, cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item K is the same item for the FOP. Is there a motion to extend that agreement until we can get a contract? Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. And item 9L would be for the firefighters. All right, cast your votes on 9L. It passes unanimously. Item M, I understand we do not need executive session, so a motion to approve the resolution would be in order? All right, cast your votes on 9M. It passes unanimously. On 9N, I understand we do need executive session. This would be to discuss bargaining negotiations with our public safety unions. Is there a motion to move that item into executive session? All right, cast your votes. Item N moves into executive session. Item O, I understand we do need executive session to get an update on the continuing negotiations on our water needs of the future. Is there a motion and a second? All right, cast your votes, and that item moves into executive session. Item 9P is claims recommended for denial. Is anyone here hoping to speak under either of the items represented on 9P, claims recommended for denial? All right, is there a motion? Is there a second? Cast your votes. It passes unanimously. And item 10 is claims recommended for approval. Is there a motion to approve the claims? All right, cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item 11 is items from council. Mark, you have anything for us today?
Nothing today, thank you.
All right, John?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to say thank you to Chief City and his staff for a job well done for our first police cadet program. The cadet program deals with juniors and seniors to try to get them to look into law enforcement as a career, and they have their graduation service on last Friday. And so I do want to thank Chief City and those who were involved with our first police cadet program. Thank you.
Just a quick one. Front page of the paper today had a great story about the art installation piece that's going on at OCU Law School on their plaza that faces west. It's a project of downtown Oklahoma City initiatives. It will be lit in the near future, and I think there's an opening on Thursday morning at 9:00 with coffee and things on the plaza. It's a great partnership.
All right, David? Pete?
Just a short item. Yesterday, yesterday morning, I had an opportunity to tour the improvements at Draper that are currently being made in the road. There's on the north of Draper, and look at the vista clearing that's been done. You can drive, if you drive down Interstate 240 now and look to the south, you'll be able to see the lake. Now, it's all, that's all been cleared. Really, a really nice vista of the lake. The road that's being completed around the north edge will provide a point that you will be able to drive to and look, and you'll be able to see all the way to the dam from a point just immediately south of I-240. It's really going to be a nice addition to it. The road has been straightened out for safety purposes. It's going to be a lot safer to be able to drive around the lake. And then I took a boat tour. It lasted longer than it should have without a hat, because it was about 140 when I got off the lake, I thought. But we looked at, about somewhere eight, nine years ago, we entered into a contract with the wildlife folks and to try to revegetate the shoreline at both La Catoca and at Draper. It's difficult to have the kind of shoreline you want. You can see that at Hefner and Overhorser also. When there are reservoirs as opposed to natural lakes, you have to build the shoreline. So and we drove on the boat to a number of places where various plants have been planted. Even with the problems that we've incurred out there since we started, the first one was that we'd almost drained the lake. We'd let it go to its lowest point since it filled in order to redo the pipeline. And then about the time we got it filled again, then we drained it again because we had a water crossing problem after these big storms last year. So we're just now starting to fill it up again, and that's really difficult for these plants because they're either, they're either able to sustain water or they're able to sustain no water, and it's hard to find one that does both. And so we've treated all of them to being submerged and then being dried out and then being submerged again. But I asked the guy, and he said that there are a number of locations in the state where they are backing away because the success rate has been so low that they feel like it's a waste of our money and their money also to do it. But I asked him what he thought Draper was, and he said on a scale of 1 to 10, he thought it was an 8. And he didn't have very many lakes in the whole system, but he felt as good about the revegetation of the shoreline as he did there. So the whole point of both of those things, the road and the revegetation of the shoreline, at least the revegetation has an impact on the water quality of the lake. You can see the difference in the water quality near the, in the areas where revegetation's occurred as opposed to those that hasn't. So that makes it cheaper to treat water out of it and, I mean, the problems out of the lake. If it's cleaner when it goes in, it's going to be cleaner when it comes out. But the other piece is, is that Draper is, it's in such a different situation than Overhorser and Hefner are, in that those are very urban lakes. They're totally surrounded by houses and traffic and noise and all the things that you would imagine in an urban setting. Draper, except for the Tinker flyover, is a very pristine area. You're going to see hawks and eagles and deer, and some of those are there at Stinchcombe, but Draper's just, it's unique, and it's located in the middle of 6,000 acres that Oklahoma City owns that at some point, we're going to look at those 6,000 acres and say, what are we going to do? Are we going to build the reservoir? Are we going to, we're going to open them up a little bit for public use? So it has a kind of a unique situation. It's isolated. There aren't any homes around it to speak of. There's very, very few, but it's a unique situation. I would ask if you go, if you're going east, go out to 240 and look at the vista of the lake. You'll see it's a, it's a whole different view of the lake than you've ever thought about before. It's, anyway, that's my commercial for Lake Draper.
Larry?
Thank you, Your Honor. Just a couple of things I'd like to report back on. Last Tuesday night, Doug Cooper in the Parks Department helped promote, along with Neighborhood Alliance and the Westbury South Neighborhood Association, kind of a town meeting dealing with parks of the future in southwest Oklahoma City, getting some ideas on what might be included in the park budget should a bond election come up for GO bonds in 2017 or 2018. The meeting was very well attended, over 50 citizens were there, not only from the Westbury South area, but from throughout Ward 3. The dialogue was excellent between the staff that Doug had out there and the residents on what they would like as far as parks in the future. And so it was a very positive meeting. And then Thursday night, we had another meeting at Castle Falls, put on by Rhonda Morgan, involving some of the folks along Northwest 10th Street who had not been actively involved in the West 10 organization, who had some concerns. We listened to those concerns, and my encouragement to them is to get involved with the West 10 people. They've done a great job in moving that whole area forward. There's a lot of challenges still ahead, but there is progress being made. Thank you, Your Honor.
All right, Ed?
I can't remember if it's been mentioned here, but I hope as many people can go to the Matisse and his time exhibit across the street at the Museum of Modern Art. It's works by Matisse, Picasso, and others. The only place in North America it's being shown is Oklahoma City. I'm not sure how that happened, but I hope that the response from our community is strong so that we get other things like this.
It happened because the Innismuch Foundation, in celebration of Edith Kenny Gaylord's 100th birthday, made a $2.5 million grant to the Oklahoma City Museum of Art to bring that exhibit from the Centre de Pompidou in Paris. It was originally, it's been in only three places. It was in Switzerland. It was in Italy, and it's here in Oklahoma City. It was originally scheduled to be in Canada, and that didn't happen. So Oklahoma City is the only North American venue for this amazing collection of art.
So where the beneficiary is. I hope everybody...
It will be here through September 17th.
But let's not wait till September.
Don't wait. It's fabulous.
Right.
Yeah, I was able to attend last night and have been there, and it is an outstanding show, and I would encourage everyone to attend. We need great numbers on this. It's a great, great project.
I think other than maybe when the Roman collection from the Louvre is here, it's the first time we've had to do timed tickets. So sustainers can attend at any time, but anybody else, you need to go online to the museum website and purchase a timed ticket so that the exhibit never is too crowded. Wonderful.
Only other thing I would just revisit is the fund balance. I don't know. If there's no interest, fine. I have enough 8-1 votes under my belt. But if there's any interest, I still have reservations about that, and I just think that the last street package was like $500 million in the last bond, and we're one year away from that. So that's, so we potentially have a huge influx for streets coming next year. I'd still be in favor of keeping that money in reserve. If there's no interest, there's no interest. But I just wanted to express that. Thanks.
I'm probably in favor of keeping it for a little bit longer, too, just to see how the economy holds up. It appears to be getting better, so let's hope it does. But I'm certainly willing to wait a little bit before we move the money.
Thank you.
All right, James?
I have an issue that's been brought up to me by a neighborhood association, and it was, it regards door-to-door solicitors. He contacted me and said there's solicitors in his neighborhood that were going to people's doors around 9:00 at night, and he thought that was too late, and I agreed with him. And so I asked our staff to look and what does our ordinances say about it. And if they get a permit, it does allow them to approach doors from 9:00 AM to 9:00 PM. Also, the neighborhood president told me that he thought that Tulsa's restricts it to 7:00 PM, which he was right. I looked that up, and they restrict it from 8:00 AM to 7:00 PM. And so I think it would be a good idea for us to also restrict it to 7:00 PM. And so I was just wondering if, just bringing it up in this way, just to get anybody's feedback and see if anybody is violently involved with that.
Do you have some staff feedback on that?
Oh, Dr. James, about...
If there isn't any feedback or any objection at this point, I'll talk to Kenny after the meeting, and we'll get some exactly how we want the wording to do.
I'd be willing to support that, too, but I'd move it up to 5:00 PM. I mean, and not have people bothering you during your dinner hour.
Does the ordinance control political people that are campaigning for office? Does it pertain to them?
No. There's also no time limit on charitable solicitors either.
Does it make a difference between the summer and winter?
No, it doesn't.
Like night, nightfall?
No, it doesn't. It doesn't distinguish it. Yeah, and see, that was another idea that I had, if we can change it from dusk till dawn, sort of wording or not. I personally like the 7:00 PM. I think that that's a reasonable, reasonable change.
I'd prefer no one show up at my house at dawn. Thank you very much.
Because I would say, that's true. But if you, what Kenny's brought up also is that, I mean, if you don't want people coming to your door, you can put a no soliciting sign on your door. For me, though, I wouldn't want to do that personally, put a no soliciting sign, because I do want politicians and other, and nonprofit organizations to knock on my door, because I, you know, I don't want to put up this barrier, but I also don't want them knocking on my door at 9:00 PM, so.
Okay, let's look at that.
Yeah.
All right, city manager reports?
Nothing this morning.
All right. All right, citizens to be heard? All right, we have executive session. We'll be back.